Welcome everyone to the regular session of Goldendale City Council from November 1st, 2021. Really going fast. We have, except for Lauren, Lauren's on screen there, so we have a full council. We don't have a public hearing tonight. We do need a motion to, for the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for city council tonight and the consent agenda as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Presentation now by Kay Schmidt about ADA parking.
Oh, already?
Yes, right.
I thought I came at the end.
We can share the presentation.
Oh gee, thanks. My name's Kay Garner Schmidt. I want to thank the council, thank Larry for putting up with my phone calls, for putting in the handicap parking. That is, it's been great. In fact, I went in to get my flu shot and the new owner came in and said to me, "You're the lady I need to thank." And I, uh-oh, what did I do? And she said, and I said, "For what?" And she said, "For having the handicap parking." And I went, "Hey, you know, City Hall listened to me." So, but I just want, even though I wrote a letter, I wanted to come personally and thank each and every one of you for putting it, you know, passing it. So, thank you. It's very much appreciated.
That's really kind of you.
Well, you guys do do a good job. You need somebody to say thank you instead of complaining all the time. I will, well, never mind.
But it's rare. And we thank you.
Thanks, Kay.
Hey, you're welcome, Larry. Now you don't have to listen to them.
He'll still listen.
Not for long.
A few more months.
The next item on the agenda is the department reports. We'll start with our Goldendale Police Department.
Truck or treat wasn't very well last night. Officer on duty didn't have anything of high priority call, so it was a smooth Halloween. A lot of candy was given out by everybody that volunteered and was down there at the truck or treat. It's a good program. It was a safe night. No one was hurt. Everything, police department's going along well. That's all I got. Nothing big.
That's good news. That's good. And from the Goldendale Fire Department?
We received a life path 15 that was paid for in part by FEMA grant and the city of Goldendale. It's going to be going into service on our A-Unit 6123. Nice thing about this is easy to use, so regardless of whether we have one responder or 10 responders, you can be assessing your patient at the same time and treating the patient. So it's an awesome device.
What equipment?
We've had an increase in medical calls, so it's going to come in really handy. We're really excited to have a good working one, so.
That's super. We're glad you have it. It's a really nice looking future equipment.
Can you tell us a little bit about what it actually does or measures or?
Yeah, can we get a demonstration?
I'll lay down here.
So essentially, what it does is your, your SPO2 and your heart rate just goes on your finger. These, these ones in here is for your fore lead, just to get a basic reading on, you know, if somebody's complaining of chest pain. If we suspect something more severe than this adds, goes to your 12 lead, so it does an EKG, which as EMTs, we cannot read it, but we can, when it prints out a report, it tells us and we can pass that along to the oncoming medics and give them the information they need. And you have your blood pressure cuff. It's got a built-in AD. Not messing with it too much, but we just got it's got to be programmed. We hit the wrong button. I don't want to know what I'll do. But it's like, it's just a great tool. It's got everything you need in one little big package.
How long will this one last before we have to get a new one?
This is, so this is the newest model. What do you say?
At least five to 10 years.
Yeah. It's all based off of, you know, the regulations of how often they have to be updated, but this is the newest, so it should get quite a bit of use out of it.
Are you nervous, Michelle?
I'm not a public speaker.
I'm looking at my self-control this way.
Yeah.
You might have to do some really quick training.
For CPR?
Oh, yeah. With this, you can also connect, like, so if we're doing CPR, you can connect the little monitor to the, I want to use the back, the back. And it'll tell us, like, what their CO2 is. It tells you, like, your compression rates, whether or not you're doing proper CPR, you know, that you're, essentially monitors make sure that we're getting proper air, proper compressions, everything. And it'll tell us all that right here.
But that's a real unknown if you're doing CPI and nobody knows.
Right. And Lauren, I think you were out, so the longer you do CPR, the less effective it becomes. So you need that reminder.
So, and it actually has a timer on it, and so it tells you, you're supposed to rotate every two minutes, people. And so it'll tell you your two minutes are up because those two minutes, sometimes they drag on forever and sometimes they just fly by.
Sure.
And so it'll tell you it's time to switch out your people and.
Yeah, that's a big point.
I think it's great because you're doing this. Thank you. It's great. Awesome.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
It's really, really good. Anything else from the fire department?
Oh, that's all we have.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Larry, is Doug on the line for Public Works?
I don't think so.
Okay. Then we'll go on to council business and we'll begin with the budget message and the preliminary budget. Larry Bellamy will get this. And I think you may find this one of the most interesting documents we've seen come through. It's really well done.
Oh, no.
Oh, no!
It was really good.
Well, I thought I would focus on the budget message and I'll just kind of go through it and hit some of the high points. This budget message is just talking about the budget where our funds are going to be spent. It primarily talks about the capital projects that we have going and the ones that we are yet to start, hopefully later this year or the first part of next year. But the preliminary budget that's presented here is the one that is due November 1st, and it is for the fiscal year 2022. It talks about the actual numbers for 2021. Actually, it shows you the budget and actual numbers for 2020, and then the budget for 2021 and the expenses and the revenue through September of 2021. So primarily, the budget will show us that we're carrying over an operation maintenance budget that is pretty similar to what it has been in the past. We have about 25 employees. There's a, I know there's 11 in the police department and eight or nine in Public Works and Administration. We have three or four. Let's see, one, two, three, four. Yeah, four down here, five down here. And then it talks about the preliminary budget appropriations. So in the second paragraph, it talks about where we're going to spend our money. We're going to, and this year is a little bit different in the cash reserves. We're actually expecting to have cash reserves of over, over $2.8 million, but a lot of that is set aside monies, one-time monies of $200,000, and then a million dollars is going to come from the ARPA funds, which is American Rescue, American Rescue Public Funds. And so a lot of that money is, the reason why it's set aside in cash reserves, restricted cash reserves, is due to the fact it's restricted in how it's supposed to be spent. So we really have to take our time. And that's one of the things that we have to look forward to this next year, is how do we go and go to spend that money? Because we do have to spend it within a certain period of time. We just can't sit on it forever. So we had $500,000 that came in May of 2021. We have another $500,000 coming in May, around May or June of 2022. So look forward to some of that discussion beginning early next year. I think we need to talk about how we spend them and what the restrictions are and move forward on some public hearings and some discussions about how to spend that million dollars. So we have the balance of the expenditures. Right at a million dollars is spent on defraying our debt service requirements. 1.5 is slated for capital outlay projects. And about four, a little over $4 million goes towards the operation maintenance of the city. So we say to ourselves, okay, that's how you're going to spend it. How did you get the money to spend it that way? And so the money, as I just mentioned, came from ARPA. There's some capital grant funds, another .45 million for the airport fuel system and the improvement of the Brook Street project. And I'll get back to that in a minute. The taxes, which will be your property taxes, your utility taxes, and your sales tax are really the big three in general fund. They support the city to the tune of about $2.7 million. And then about 2.5 is from charges for services, so that's your water and sewer bills. And that's pretty much it for those. So as I mentioned, I want to come back to Brook Street because that is a capital project that we have this year. Well, I should say next year. We had it for this year. We got all the plans and specifications all put in place, but the timing was just not right. It was too late in the summer and too early in the fall. So we are going to put that out in winter time, say January or February of 2022. Is that kind of good? Well, that was Brook Street. And then we do have some money set aside in the water sewer system budget for $300,000 of projects that we want to do. About half of that, we anticipate spending on the Byers Street Water System, Byers Street Water Main Line. So about half of it is already designated for use at the Byers Street Project. Of course, we want to do the water before we do the road work and the sidewalk and the curb. And then the big project, which we talked about quite a bit this fall and late, late summer, was the waste water treatment plant. And that's a good-sized project to the estimated tune of about $4 million. We'll see how that all pans out. But it's going to do grid system improvements, irrigation system improvements, configuration, reconfiguration of the irrigation basin, and some solids handling improvements will also be done, as well as a baseball pump at the lift station. All of these, we are doing a couple of things. One, we're improving the reliability of the system, but we're also trying to do things that will help save electricity and save energy costs, so that it costs us less to operate. So that's always going to be on our mind in a lot of ways. And then we have begun working on, as we talked about, we've begun working on grants to help offset the costs as best we can. We did receive a grant from the Department of Ecology for $205,500, which is called a forgivable principal loan program, and it's specified for design cost. But we also were able to match that through a request through the Clickcat County Economic Development Authority to the tune of $250,000. So we'll, we will be able to fund the entire present plan and design with funds, with grant funds. So we'll spend, all of that money is due to be spent in 2022, and then we hope to go and do, have things ready for construction in 2020, late 2022 and early 2023. So that's how we see that going for the next few, next few months. And then a project we haven't talked about yet is the airport improvement project. We've done about $200,000 worth of work. A lot of that, of course, is the plan and specification. A portion of that is the down payment on the fuel system package, which we ordered quite a bit, quite a long time ago, but we had to do that because we, we just had, they didn't have the workers, I guess, to promise an earlier delivery, so the delivery is kind of far out there. So that's why we ordered it first. And we should hopefully get that yet this year, or whenever we have the civil work done, then we'll be able to have it all set up to bring in, bring in the new fuel system. And I already talked about Byers Street. Again, we want to just make sure that we're doing our best to optimize the time that we go out to bid. We want to try to optimize the timing as far as the weather is concerned. We also want to optimize it as far as what kind of costs we're running into and things like that. So we have a plan and we'll try to go down that plan as closely as possible. But as we have seen lately, we don't know what the future holds, but we will do our best to spend the money as wisely and cost-effectively and efficiently as possible. So that's what I wanted to do tonight, was to focus on the budget message. And that pretty much synthesizes down what we are planning for 2022.
Thank you, Larry.
One question, Mayor.
Sure.
All right. The $4 million that, are they going to reimburse this, or we send them the bill when we do a certain phase on the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, we'll, we'll send, the first bills will be sent to, yes, they'll be sent to the Department of Ecology and then also be sent to Clickcat County.
Oh, okay.
Those are the two entities we'll be working with. The Department of Ecology will be applying the forgivable loan portion. And then the Clickcat County will spend the money and it'll be a reimbursement grant through the Clickcat County. So we will have to spend the money, like you said, and then request reimbursement.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments? I think as you read through that document, you'll find a lot of very, very helpful explanations of how the money came and how it's going for useful projects. The next item on the agenda, there's no other comments, will be the tourism packet for 2022.
This is for informational purposes for the council. We did, usually in October, we start the process of requesting, of making, of providing applications for those people that want to spend money on tourism and promotion services through the lodging tax revenues. So we have started the process. We are announcing the call for projects from public agencies and from nonprofit organizations. We believe, and we are expecting to appropriate about $55,000 for 2022, which is a little bit more than we did last year. We did, last year was really a slow year and we did, we've done a little bit better this year, so we're estimating that we should have $55,000 available. I think last year we had, or this year we had only $40,000, but we made it through. And I think our treaty days is going to be, we're going to add the.
The time capsule.
The time capsule.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you, actually, I was going to mention to you, you may want to take a look at these funds.
Yeah.
If you have a nonprofit organization or if you're going to associate yourself with the Chamber, you may tag along with the Chamber maybe, or do something on your own. But there should be some money available for what you're doing, and then you can work with the Chamber to get, get some help as well.
Great.
Yes, thank you. Anyway, there's a process. We go out, we have applications for the money. We have an event committee that reviews the presentations. Then we make a recommendation to the council. And the council makes the final decision on the resolution to, to approve the award of those funds. We are hoping that that resolution will go to council by January 18th. And that should be enough time to get everything in place. The advertising is sometimes pretty key, especially with the car shows. They have to get those advertisements out in the early publications so the people start planning to go to Goldendale, for instance. In August, they may start planning to do that in March or April or something. So we want to be able to get these monies awarded early in January so we can help support that effort as best we can. So if you want to look through that, if you want to share with anybody that might be interested, it is for nonprofit organizations and public agencies. But if you have any ideas on how the city can help with that, and if you are, if you are in a for-profit, for-profit entity or a smaller entity, you could probably work with the Chamber as well to help, help them with their application. When they actually apply to the city, then a portion of that can be used through the Chamber.
Kevin has a question.
Kevin has a question.
Kevin, you had a question?
Yeah. Hi, Larry. How are you doing today? I was just wondering, and I think I mentioned this last year, the $55,000 for tourism, is there a way that we can combine that with other communities and to boost that number? So we're bringing people from out of the area of out of state, not only to our community, but the surrounding communities and work as one, one entity almost?
Yeah, it's actually, the money is supposed to be used for Goldendale. It has to support Goldendale. We can go out little ways, like to the Maryhill Museum, like when they do the car show down there, that brings people to Goldendale. But if you go out much farther than that, it actually does not work. The money is supposed to be sent, spent in Goldendale because its main purpose is to, to put heads to beds. And those heads to beds and way to turn that tourism dollar over, we've got to use it for local hotels. And so it needs to, it needs to support the local hotels. That's the main thing with overnight stays. And then you're also supposed to, and then beyond that, if they can support the restaurants and the retail industry in Goldendale, then those monies come back to Goldendale and through the, through the sales tax. And again, it supports the town of Goldendale.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? I have just one comment, and it's more for these organizations than for city council. But these applications are due by December 3rd, 2021, at 5:00 in the evening. Very, very often, people get tripped up with that. And they, they have committees that set up these big events, but they don't necessarily meet enough to have everything ready by the time to. And that can be a very serious problem for them. We've had that a number of times. So make sure people that are going to be involved in events in Goldendale be ready by 5:00 PM December 3rd, 2021. If it's a Friday, if we can help you, we'll be happy to do that. Thank you, Larry, for starting that ball rolling.
Okay.
The next item has to do with ordinances. And this is the 2021 budget amendment for funding the Bureau painting downtown. Larry, would you like to present that?
Yes. This is the first reading on the budget amendment for, through the Economic Development Fund, for requests from the Chamber to begin an Art at the Heart of Goldendale campaign, which is to draw murals. And the first, first one is being painted now, and they're hoping to paint on all four corners of downtown Maine and Columbus. So this, we heard a presentation about that a couple of meetings ago. And I put together an ordinance and talked about the use of the money, use of the money. And I want to tell you that we did do an evaluation of where the money should be spent. And we talked about three different places. One was, well, how come you can't use it with the tourism dollars that we just talked about? Well, there's some restrictions on that, which the Auction Office shared with me. And then the other question was, why, how come we can't use the ARPA monies? We weren't sure that that would be such a good idea either. But then I found that the Economic Development Fund allowed for use of the, the housing rehab monies when it came back in. And it said that we could use those return funds for leveraging funds in economic development projects or in other economic development strategies approved by the council. So that's why I spent so much time on the wherethes, because I wanted to show that it had an economic impact and that the desire was to improve economic development activity. And then the ordinance is the best way for the city council to show its approval for that. So again, it's for painting murals. It's to benefit and beautify and revitalize downtown Goldendale. It's to be used as an advertising tool, to make it part of a corridor between Tappanish and the Dallas Oregon. And as they're going to, if somebody's going mural painting looking, they're going to have to come right by Golden now. So we need to try to get that message out there. So I would request that the council adopt this ordinance for its first reading, and then I'll bring it back again at the next meeting for a second reading.
Council, any questions or comments on this?
Mayor?
I would move to approve being, let's see, move to approve an increased appropriation of the Economic Development Fund in the amount of $7,500 for its first reading.
Seconded that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve an increased appropriation of the Economic Development Fund in the amount of $7,500 for its first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
I have a question for you.
Sure, sure.
So on this, was this what we talked about the last time and the money that was going for the first painting, right?
Right.
So you're saying first reading. So, so are we going to give money to them every time they want to paint? We're going to give it out? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think that, no.
No, no, that's, that's.
That's what I'm asking.
That's not it.
No.
There's a first and second reading for a lot of things that have to do with, that's, this is a ordinance number 1511, and it goes through and it has a second reading. So approved then. So you'll see this again. Okay.
So are we, are you opposed or approved?
I'm approved.
Okay.
Glad you're watching.
Make the chair raise away, Karen.
Did we have?
Lauren has a question.
Lauren has a question?
Good. I was just going to ask Lauren if you had a question. Yes, Lauren?
Yeah, I was curious. Would take a minute to look back at our economic development budget for the last two years, kind of how those funds were, were used and were they fully utilized? Just curious how, what the look back is.
Okay, I can, I can provide you that information, not off the top of my head, but I can still provide it. And I'll be able to share that information with you prior to this, prior to the second reading. Does that sound all right? Did he hear me?
Sorry, I think I lost the audio for a moment.
You didn't hear me.
Okay, so can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I was just going to say, I don't have the, I need to compile that information and I can do that before the next council meeting and have, have that information ready before they. before they bring it back for the second reading.
Okay. So I was just going back through the PDF for tonight's meeting. And maybe I'm not looking at this right, but if I look at page 29 of our meeting package for tonight for economic development, is that the correct place to look at the budget for the past two years?
For the economic development funds you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, let me just double check here. It's on page 13 of 21. That's the expenditures on it.
Page 29 at 66 for tonight's meeting minutes or meeting agenda.
Okay, I don't have it broken down with that kind of number. That's on your screen?
Yeah, that's what was posted on the website for tonight's meeting agenda.
Well, mine, mine is reading the page 13 of 21. So does it say Economic Development Fund?
Yeah, 13 of 21 for that section on the page that I'm looking. I live the right place, we're looking at Economic Development?
Yes.
So for 2021, are we still utilizing those funds then? What's the forecast for the $30,000 that was budgeted?
We were, we were budgeted to spend $12,000 on professional services, which we have spent none of that. And then we, then there was $2,283 spent in 2020, actual in 2020 through Maquette, Mid-Columbia Economic Development District. And it just says that we spent $2,283 in 2020. I don't see that we spent anything in 2021 yet.
And then the $18,000 for the Economic Development Fund?
Yeah, that's just the, that's just the expected, expected carryover. So that's how much we hope to have in the bank, so to speak, at the end of the year is $18,000. So we didn't spend any of the $18,000, that's like cash reserves.
Okay, okay. Do you know those unspent funds, do you like to fund this $7,500 request?
Say that again?
Could these unspent funds be utilized to fund the $7,500 request?
Yes, that's exactly what we're doing. We'll move.
Okay, I see.
Move some of the reserved monies, the available cash reserves into the economic development expenditures for this year.
Okay. And that's a one-time expenditure or is it something that will continue?
Well, that's the way I've kind of said it to them, is this would be more of a one-time expenditure. And then hopefully they can get the ball rolling and get some, some funding from some other places. But I think that's what you were asking, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Is this going to be, are they going to be asking for this every year?
Yeah.
There'll be time to find funding.
Yeah.
In grants, state, and chambers as well.
Go, go ahead.
Oh yeah, no, it sounds, I think it's a great project. And it looks like, you know, we have the funds available in the budget that were earmarked for economic development. I just wanted to kind of put that to the numbers within the budget itself. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome. With that, the, the motion passes for the budget amendment for funding the mural painting. We'll go now to report of officers and city administrator. We'll begin with Larry Bellamy.
Moving me right along there.
It's the work night.
Okay, just a few, a few dates to keep in mind. November 6th, which is this Saturday, the Oregon Rally Car Show is going to be in town. And they've got some big name rally car drivers. And they're going to be showing their rally cars off at Main Street, the 100 block, the 200 block of West Main Street on Saturday, November 6th. And I believe they'll be out on, oh, maybe you don't remember that one.
What?
When, when it starts.
It's eight o'clock down there, isn't it?
I think it's eight AM.
I think, I think they start down there at 8:00 AM. I think they leave by 10:00 or 11:00 or something, yeah.
It was early.
Um, 8:00 to 9:00 on Main Street.
It's very, it's a short time.
They should have 75 cars.
And these are racers.
Of course, to the corner, they got to start staging their cars about 9:30, 10:00 o'clock when the time runs.
So if you're inclined to go out Saturday morning in cool, wet Goldenale, then you will have something to attend that early in the morning. So go out and have breakfast and go to the car show. So that's on Saturday, the 6th. On Thursday, the 11th, we have the Veterans Day Parade. On November 12th, we have the preliminary budget will be available to the public. And then we'll have public hearings on that budget on the 15th and on the, on December 6th for anybody that wants to comment on that. Then we have, the Christmas Parade is coming up. It's not too early to think about it and invite your family to join in the parade. And that is scheduled for December 11th of next month. And that, I believe, is at 5:00. But you might have to double check on that one.
It's 5:00.
Is it 5:00? I thought it was 5:00. It's really a lot of fun. We have been starting to make it a family affair. We invite especially my son and daughter's families and Jody's sisters and my son and daughter and their families. Would they all come down and decorate the truck and have dinner and have hot dogs or something like that outside by our little fire? And then we go down and go in the parade and it's really a lot of fun. It's a great family event. So I'm hoping that it'll begin to catch on even more than what it has. And you can do it by just inviting your family. How about that? Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about was I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware that, and we've talked about it, but I just want to let you know it's going to go out for advertisement this week. And that's the refilling of the positions of the clerk treasurer and the city administrator. And we are both due to, to retire in July of 2022. And we're going to start the advertisement. I've got the, the ad and the job description and the brochure all on my desk, ready to, ready to go out this week. And so we'll get that out, start, start the process of looking for a new city administrator and clerk treasurer. So we'll get started on those this week. And away we go. And I hope it all works out for everybody. I don't want to say anything more about it because it's, I've been here for 26 years and it's going to be a hard process, I'm afraid.
Bittersweet.
Bittersweet. It's going to go with those. You're welcome. Thank you. With that, I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you, Larry. And next winter, somebody at this table will be sitting down in Arizona, nice and warm, and having a nice, warm winter time. But not us guys will be freezing to death. Okay, we'll go to our, our council and let's start with Lauren Maker. Lauren, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Uh, no comments, please, thank you.
Okay, darling?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So I wanted to find out, is the compliance and the dog catcher the same person?
The compliance, you mean?
Yeah, code enforcement.
No, no.
So how many days a week does the code enforcement person work?
He spends about half of his time on code enforcement and half of his time on building.
Okay, is he full-time?
Yes.
Okay. I want to find out that.
And the animal control is covered about 20% of Jessica's time. Jessica gun three.
How, how often is she?
And she works 80% for the police office, police department, and 20% for animal control.
So how very much for animal control?
No.
She's on Tuesday through Friday. And, but if any animal complaints come in during that time, she will handle them. And she's also subject to call out if we have like a dangerous dog situation.
Another thing I want to say was the big G that they lit up for homecoming, awesome. Finally, again, that was, that was.
They even lit it up last night also.
Oh, they did? That was awesome. That was good to see that up again. And then truck or treat, well, great, as everybody said. So that was, that was the only thing I had to talk about. Oh, I know another thing. So what, and I may not be up here next year, but you know, next year when they do truck or treat or something like that, maybe we can get the businesses to kind of clean up in front of their places down on Main Street. We had to go along and clean up a lot of them and get the leaves off and stuff because of kids and stuff. It'd be nice if the businesses would do it themselves, you know, so.
Anticipation is candy.
Just have a look and then.
Yep.
That's it.
Thank you, darling. David?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, that was one of the things I had on my notes too is thanks to everybody who was involved in lighting that G up. I know the FFA and the high school football team, they put all new LED lights on it. That's why it looks so great. And Dan LaFever and all the employees of Bishop's, they have, you know, got it lit up yesterday. And it's just a good morale booster for everybody that gets to see that. You know, they have plans on lighting that up more often. And yeah, big thanks to everybody involved with that.
That thing's been up there forever.
Yeah, they just, they just got those new lights on it.
It's awesome.
It looks so good.
When I was a kid, they'd light it up every.
Yeah, it's really exciting and.
How, how much time does it take for them to light it up? So we have to drive up there or?
Well, I'd have to just make up some numbers.
Just thinking, it'd be nice to have it lit up for community purposes.
Two days to light it?
What?
All that stuff has to come off of there because otherwise people like to roll the stuff down the hill through the fences and everything.
Well, they haven't rolled it, I mean, they put all the tires together like long time ago.
They still come out in chunks.
But, but they're leaving it up there now, I thought.
All the lighting and stuff comes out and is stored.
Oh, okay.
Well, my thought was that you could light it up during community events, like community days, Veterans Day or the fair, stuff like that, light it up during those community events.
Oh yeah, everybody loves seeing it. I know, like nothing but compliments about it. Everybody talks about it. But anyways, the only other thing I want to talk about is, man, I got invited to the Historical Society's meeting last Saturday. Just on a whim, I saw someone in and they said, yeah, come down. I learned all sorts of stuff about local history. And they had a great presentation about the Presby Museum and all the work that's been going into that. They've totally redid lots of it and I saw some pictures of it. I'm really looking forward to checking it out in person. And, you know, that meeting, they had probably 20 or 30 pies. You know, I mean, we never have pies here, but at the Historical Society's meeting, they have pies everywhere. And so, you know, they'll probably see me there. Every meeting they have, I imagine.
See what we can do.
So I really appreciate that. That's all I have today. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, David. Elliot?
Uh, I don't really have much other than truck or treat was a blast. I got to walk around with my youngest last night. And that was just a lot of fun. It was nice to see everybody out and about.
That's good. Andy?
Well, so this last week, I took my grandfather to Arizona. We went to Vegas for two of the days we were down there. And it made me realize how much handicap accessible places are. And I want to thank Kay for bringing up the handicap place downtown. It, it's something I think our city should really look at more, not just downtown.
I'm not done yet either.
But to, to go around town and make sure all of our sidewalks are okay for people to get on there. Make sure that, you know, the sidewalks are in good shape and, and make it better for our parks and for people of all ages that have mobility issues. It really opened my eyes to how much we take for granted, the people that don't, that aren't in a wheelchair or don't have to push a wheelchair for somebody. And I think it's something that our city really needs to work on. So that's all I have to do there.
Phil?
Well, I have nothing, but I think Andy just volunteered for a special project. That's the same, same issue I've been pushing since I've been on council. And of course, it's, it's a, it's a big project and undertaken to get anything done like that. But I think, I think I'll come up with Andy and then we'll work on some projects that we talked about with the parks.
Sure.
And getting some grant funding and things going like that. It's really important. And I always had a conference once and the speaker there on disabilities, his last message was, you know, everybody should support accessible, accessibility because one day you're going to be old and you're going to need the grant. And you're going to need the accessible pathways and things like that.
Exactly right.
That's all I have.
I, just for a moment on Phil's remarks on issues with people that have difficulty moving around, whether they're in a chair or walking or a cane or a walker. It's not just the old, I saw a really incredible article about playgrounds and the fact that a lot of children with those disabilities show up at the playground and there's nothing for them. And I've looked at some of the park equipment that I think we can eventually put into our parks so that anybody can play in those parks. I think it would help a lot on our youngest as well as our oldest. Myland?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment that the mayor and I attended the airport conference at Leavenworth a little over a week ago. And during the meeting, I had an opportunity to meet a lady from the Tri-Cities who belonged to the International Woman Pilot Association. And they would like to come to fly in to the Goldenale Airport. And then after that, go up to see the observatory. And I've talked to the mayor. I think we're going to send him a emails, invite him to come to Goldenale. And I feel that maybe we should, the city should provide transportation for them. We will take, we will greet them and we will take them to the restaurant, whatever restaurant they want to, to go. And also take them up to the observatory. And after that, some may fly out that night and some may stay for the night. And once stayed for the night, we would also provide transportation to the hotel, whichever hotel they would like to stay. Again, this, this is a organization that started in 1929. And Amelia Earhart was a member. And so I think it's an opportunity to promote the airport, to promote the observatory and economics for the city of Goldenale. How many, I, I don't know. And this is probably going to be next spring before this happens. But I think it's a great opportunity for the city to kind of promote this and go from there then. So anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Myland. I want to add a little bit on to Myland's report because I was at the same airport convention. But I talked to a man that works for the Department of Transportation, David Chanel. And he was really excited because of the things Goldenale has that most cities never come close to. Between Maryhill Museum, the Stonehenge, the observatory is a one-off period on the West Coast. A number of things like that, plus it's a beautiful city and a beautiful part of the state. And something that these small airports do is they have fly-ins. And we heard some real horror stories about them. If they go wrong, you get too many planes there and you've really got some problems where the planes are going to be parked. But the thing is, it's, it's quite a tourist draw and a very different element. And I'm going to be working and asking the chamber to help with developing a. And I'm gonna be working and asking the chamber to help with developing a tourism brochure strictly to put in small airports. I think it'll pay off for Goldendale. People will come and see things that they don't see anywhere else in the state. And it's worthwhile to, to develop that for the, the sake of getting people into hotels and overnight stays and just to get to know Goldendale much better. And the other item I wanted to talk about just for a second. It's twenty-twenty-one, part of twenty has been one hell of a year. It's been discouraging, disappointing, difficult, challenging. But look at all the things that Goldendale has gotten done. Community, city, school, football team, everything like that. We've, we've toughed through it. We're almost down to twenty-twenty-one. Hopefully twenty-twenty-two is gonna be like a rose garden. We'll have to wait and see. But there are so many things that we've been able to do when we didn't think we would ever get out of the house. I mean, there, there are parents that were almost suicidal until the kids went back to school. It's just that way. But, uh, but I think Goldendale, Goldendale itself deserves a pat on the back just for how well it handled a very difficult and discouraging situation and came through it with good numbers, low amounts of deaths, still deaths, but they were everywhere. But, uh, but we pulled together. Even when we were confined and quarantined, people still worked together, talking on the phone to check on others, making sure things got done. And projects like we talk about here all the time, those were put together and they happened. And that was because of people that were involved and helped get all that done. Uh, and I hope Goldendale will look at itself with a much brighter light. With that, we'll go to public comments.
I have one more thing. When you guys were talking about the elderly thing and stuff, so the county is stopping their in-home care services. I don't know if you guys know that. You know that? Yeah, it's gonna affect probably what, thirty, thirty to forty families in our county.
The county's stopping.
Senior services, the, the county's saying that they don't have the funding to do the in-home care anymore. So they're going to stop that. So that's a real, um, it's terrible for Goldendale, terrible.
Now, was this something where they provided food to them or was it more of that?
People to go in the homes and help, help take care of them, help do the stuff, you know? It's terrible, I mean, it's terrible.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear that.
At the end of the year, it's done.
We can try to look at, there must be other, other ways to do that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, something because there has to be something because they need that help.
Yes.
I mean.
They have to have that. A lot of cases.
You know, we don't have a nursing home, we don't have a assisted living.
No.
It's terrible.
We'll see what we can find, all of us, come looking at that. Any other comments in general? Yes?
Um, Kay? Yeah, just me. Elliot? I don't know if this is under city or county, but the entrance off of ninety-seven, going down Simcoe, you have McDonald's and you have the Chevron. Maybe it's mind driving, I don't know. But turning on to Simcoe, you can't see the road. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, is there a way of putting guardrails? You know, you've got the road and then you've got a ditch.
Now, which end is Simcoe? Out by ninety-seven?
Out by ninety-seven, between McDonald's and the Chevron. And especially coming into town, like if you're coming, going north on ninety-seven, turning. If I didn't know that there was a ditch there, I would have been in there a lot of times.
Is that, is that state highway?
See, I don't know if, if that's state or county.
It could be state, it could be, I don't think it's county, but I think it could be city too. Depending on how the line is drawn there.
Well, that's, that's what I was asking, so if it's.
One thing that we are going to do is, what we had hoped to do this year was to improve the structure of that intersection by grinding it out and repaving it. But it was gonna be done in conjunction with the work that they were doing on Highway ninety-seven. And when they, when their work took them by Simcoe, they'd stop at Simcoe and redo that whole approach in there.
Because it, it, the appearance coming in is terrible and then trying to even see the road.
Sure. It's just, there were some things they had hoped to do this year, but they just got, some things got in the way and they didn't get certification and then it got too late in the year and.
Right, well.
And so then.
Of course, I'm not used to ninety-seven going down Columbus too, so that's just a straight shot and no turns, but, okay, well.
So there is, there is a plan that's in place and money's been set aside to redo the improvement at that, that intersection.
But do you know what I'm saying by trying to make it a little bit safer coming in?
What do you mean by safer? Because there's, the streetlights are already there.
What, darling?
Reflectors, like wooden reflectors.
Reflectors or something to, to let people know that there's a, here's the road, but then on, there's ditches. Because if you turn too quick onto Simcoe, you're gonna end up in a ditch on Darren's, um, service station, one or the other.
Well, could you just put some reflector sticks?
That's what we were just talking about.
Yeah, right, right.
Something we may be able to take care of ourselves.
Okay, it's just.
We'll do it in cooperation with the state, so.
See, I didn't know if it was city, state, county.
I think it'd be state and city.
Okay, all right.
If you're going fast enough, you'll just fly right over that.
I've got news for you, I'm not driving at nine anymore. No, no, so, okay, well, I just wanted, uh.
Thank you, really good advice. If there's nothing else, we'll go to public comment. Is there anyone that wants to make a public comment either on the line or here in the council chamber?
Kevin?
Uh, Kevin.
Kevin? Yes, Kevin?
Yeah, Mayor, it's, it's Kevin. I had to fly back to Oak Harbor, Woodbee Island for a tragedy. I don't want to get into that one, but, um, I lived around my old town that I lived in for twelve years with the Navy. And the town is still shut down. They're down to one bar, a couple restaurants, and they're ten times the size that we are as a community. I just wanted to give kudos to everybody and say, look, you guys have held yourself together. You've kept most of your, of, of the city together. When you have somebody the size of Oak Harbor, Woodbee Island that is altering. They have their own home people and their own Woodbee Island. I went out for, uh, what's it called? Thursday Night Football when the Seahawks were playing. There was four people in the entire downtown at the old bar that was open. So I wanted to thank you all. I think you guys have done much better than that.
Thank you. It's just the, the people in Goldendale, they're great. Anyone else for comments? Thanks, Kevin, to hear from you. Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded?
Moved and seconded into adjournment City Council for November first, twenty-twenty-one. Our next meeting is November fifteenth, seven o'clock. Thank you.